All right, guys. I'm gonna call this meeting to order on January 23rd, 2018. Welcome, everyone. And we're gonna start with roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Here. And if Chief Barnhill, do you mind coming up first? We're gonna get started. Chief Barnhill's gonna give us an update on today's tragic event in Marshall County, and then we're going to have a moment of silence today, tonight, together to show our support.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. Excuse me, I don't have any updates as far as specifics to Marshall County. What I do think is prudent is to notify you, and maybe more importantly, of what the Paducah Police Department did in our community upon receiving notification from 911. Once that notification was made, we knew the severity of what was going on. We immediately sent officers to all Paducah Independent Schools and to St. Mary's Schools as just a visible deterrent until we understood the severity of it, understood maybe who was involved and to what level. We also had multiple officers respond to Marshall County, to the high school, and provided security for the officers there. Whatever details that they needed to work through, we were there to assist them. We also had a federal response from our task force officer assigned to the ATF, which is currently still there, assigned to them, with them. A command post was established at the police department, and we filled in a lot of calls, a lot of concern. A lot of that was just having the conversation with the public to let them know what we were doing and our proactive efforts. Once many of the injuries were confirmed, once we were able to confirm also which hospitals they were going to, our focus began then to discuss with hospital administration what our involvement would be at both hospitals. We provided security there and to make sure that their efficiency wasn't impeded by the parking or the number of people there just to help out. And we provided a pretty large assistance there at both hospitals. Lured ended up getting the majority, if not all, of the patients. I don't believe anybody went to Baptist, but the coordination was there, and it was a good opportunity for us to have those conversations about a response if it were to happen in our community. So, our thoughts and prayers are with Marshall County, obviously with all their first responders, and we'll be here for the next few days in coordination with them about whatever their needs may be that we can assist them with.
Well, I want to say, and I'm sure on behalf of the Commission, first of all, thank you for stepping up and helping them because this is our region, and they're a big part of our community as well. So, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
If you guys will stand with me, we're gonna have a moment of silence tonight.
And I'm gonna ask Commissioner Abraham, do you mind leading us in the prayer? Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for today, even though today we're sad because of what happened in our community, the lives lost, the impact on families. Father, as believers, we have shown us countless examples that you are sufficient to take away sorrows. So, Father, we lean on you right now. Your authority, your power, your sustaining effort starts at the end of our road. And those families, they feel right now that they're at the end of their road. So, Father, we pray for you to be who you've always been, a saving grace. These things we ask in your shewest name. Amen.
Thank you so much. If you'll stay standing, we have a special guest tonight to lead us in the pledge. Jack Roof, wanna come on up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Mark, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Mayor, there are none.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have several special guests tonight with us from St. Mary, and it is actually was not Catholic Schools Week right now. It was, but the snow threw us... No, it's coming up. Sorry, sorry. It's coming up, so that's good news. We still made it. I really was afraid we didn't make this, so this is good for me. So, we're gonna ask the students that are representing St. Mary to come on up and stand at that podium if you don't mind, and if you guys wanna come on up as well, that would be great. So, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then we're gonna have a few words, and then I'm gonna come take some pictures with this, okay? All right, here we go.
Hold on just a second.
Okay. There we go. All right. Here we go. Whereas St. Mary's school system has since 1858 continuously provided the highest caliber of academic and moral development to those students which they serve for the mutual benefit of every citizen, and whereas Paducah Catholic educators have throughout our city's history dedicated and used their talents toward the development of a responsible and spiritually motivated citizenship in preparation for their responsibilities as residents of this city and members of society, and whereas those students who have been educated in the St. Mary's school system have addressed themselves to the pressing social and moral issues of our day that evoke the fullest measure of the spiritual wealth of our country, and whereas with the theme Catholic Schools, Communities of Faith, Knowledge, and Service, Catholic Schools across the nation are celebrating National Catholic Schools Week from January 28th to February 3rd, 2018. Now therefore, I, Brandy Harless, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim next week as Catholic Schools Week in the City of Paducah, and I commend this observance to all of our citizens. Thank you all so much for being here. And Eleanor, do you have a few words? Thanks? Okay, great. Please.
Thank you very much for having us tonight and for recognizing Catholic Schools Week for this proclamation. I want to thank the Commission. I want to thank the Mayor. I want to thank the City of Paducah for providing us the opportunity not only to have school choice, but to have protection through the school choice and for the things that you do. Today, we were very, very glad, pleased to have the police show up at our school and to bring the news. They are the ones that brought the news to us that we had an active school shooting in the region, and they stayed with us and communicated and just gave us an overall sense of presence, of peace, and safety while they were there, and I know it encouraged our parents as well. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Chief Barnhill, if you're still here for that, and the officers that came. We appreciate their dedication, and we also appreciate the fact that you are very supportive of school choice here. We're not a private school. We're a non-public school. We're a Catholic school that provides and has been here for a long time, and we produce citizens that come back to Paducah and give back to our city, which is very important. And so, we want you to know that you're always welcome at St. Mary, always welcome to see our students and what they're able to do, and know that we provide the excellence that Paducah expects of us and of our students. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, you guys wanna get a picture in front of the Commission?
Sure.
You think it can be this tall enough?
Yeah.
Someone wanna hold this? Do you want to hold that?
No, I have something next to me.
Right. Can we tell the difference?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Please come back.
Absolutely. Let's have a good evening. All right, tonight, we also have a presentation from our Barclay Regional Airport concerning the recent audit, and Richard Roof is here to present that to us.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I've left a copy of the audit at your place. It covers our fiscal year 2017, and it presents fairly in all material aspects, the financial condition of the airport authority for the audit in period. We have no significant discrepancies disclosed on it. It was a clean audit, and I hope you enjoy reading it. Should you have any questions, by all means, give me a call. The airport puts an economic injection of $43 million into the regional economy annually, and that's 150 jobs that are out there currently. In terms of airline service, SkyWest Airlines, doing business as United Express, enters into a new two-year contract effective February 1st with the Central Air Service Office of the Department of Transportation. So, we are assured of a continuation of the Chicago service for the next two years, ending January 31st, 2020. We're also pleased to announce the resumption of the Saturday afternoon round trip to Chicago effective on the February schedule, so we're looking forward to that. And there'll be other time adjustments that we'll be announcing subsequently. Last year, being 2017 on a calendar year basis, we had about 41,700 passengers coming or going utilizing that service to Chicago. We anticipate probably about 42 and a half to 43,000 this year, assuming that we have no more snow, no more ice, and a warm summertime. We have, interestingly enough, 10% of those passengers are Chicago local, which means they go either to Chicago or come from Chicago, no further. And I think that says something that might be of interest to economic development, but I'm not exactly sure how to interpret it. We also have 10% now that are international ticketed passengers, and that's quite obvious during quilt show and some other events, but it's fascinating that you can get from any number of Asian locations, including Beijing, China, to Paducah, Kentucky on one plane change. In that regard, to some extent, our international service is about as good as our unnamed neighboring airport 130 miles to our southeast. So, airport projects, we continue to invest in rehabilitation and expansion of airport facilities, mostly financed with FAA Airport Improvement Program grants. Our current projects are an airport master plan update. We are going to replace all our lighted airfield signage, which is about 65 to 70 signs to beat FAA's current standards that came out last year. We will wind up milling and repaving about half of our taxiway network. We will hopefully replace a police cruiser during the course of the year, and we're in the process of designing a sewer line extension that would meet up the JSA's system at the McCracken High School. So, our plate is pretty full for this year, and on behalf of the Board and the staff, we appreciate the city's support of the operation there. Should you have any questions, I'm willing to give an answer.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions for Richard?
That's great.
No? Thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, looks like we have our own comprehensive financial report presentation as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Perkins?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have with us David Hampton with the Kemper CPA Group. They are our financial auditors. David's firm performed our most recent financial statement audit, which was fiscal '17, and is here to answer audit-related questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Of course, as John said, my name's David Hampton. I'm a partner with Kemper CPA Group, and I'm here to present the city's Paducah's CAFRA for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. Before we go over the reports, I would like to take this opportunity to thank a few people. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the city's staff for their assistance and cooperation. This is a rather extensive report, CAFRA being much more substantial than just basic financial statements. Creates a lot of demand on all the staff, and we certainly appreciate all the assistance they provide us. And in particular, I'd like to thank John and his staff. They have to feel a lot of our aggravation, maybe you can say, and of course, they always work with us to try to make the process as smooth as possible, so we certainly appreciate that. And then we'd like to thank you all as well for the opportunity to assist you and to work with your organization. So, your comprehensive annual report is made up of four parts. You have an introductory section, a financial section, a statistical section, and a single audit section. That's kind of an overview of your entire report, and we'll just focus on our reports. Our independent auditor report is located on page 11. If you happen to have your PDF copy, it's on page 18.
I don't... Was it in our mailbox?
Was it in the mailboxes? I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been on my desk for a while.
Well, if you have one for the ladies.
Yeah, actually, we had planned on delivering about two weeks ago, and kind of everything kinda got thrown, paywired.
Let's see if we can get our hands on some. There's one on my desk, too, Mark.
Of course, last week.
I mean, it's like this thick, so it'll take us a while.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's two sided.
I gotta weigh your weight.
About 150 pages there.
David, explain in simple layman's terms for the radio audience, as they used to say. What is the... I mean, what does the CAFRA mean?
It's a comprehensive...
To the citizen, how does it impact them? What's their takeaway?
A comprehensive annual report provides, in addition to just your basic financial statements and required notes under general accepted accounting principles, and in your case, because you're a governmental entity under government auditing standards, your basic financial statements just makes up a small piece of a comprehensive financial report. With a comprehensive financial report, you are bringing in the city's views on what's going on economically and in your community. You're also including statistical data that provides additional information that is not normally going to be noted in a standard financial report. So, it's much more encompassing, provides a lot more detail what's going on from a financial impact, as well as some statistical data that's going on in your organization. So, provides a user a lot more insight from a financial standpoint.
I think we're ready.
Everybody got one? Okay, so on page 11 is our independent auditor's report. In the second and third paragraph, we discuss the responsibility of the city, and our responsibility is your auditor. These financial statements presented, as presented, are the responsibility of the city. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on these statements. The sixth paragraph there at the bottom expresses our opinion, and as noted, we determine these statements are fairly presented in all material respect. This is known as an unmodified or clean opinion, no gap departures. In addition, on the next page, as noted in paragraph seven, we applied limited procedures to your required management discussion and analysis and pension supplementary information on pages 13 through 28 and 96 through 101. Because this information was not audited, we are not expressing an opinion on this information. In addition, in the ninth paragraph, we did apply auditing procedures to other supplemental information included on pages 102 through 121 and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards on pages 142 and 143, and determined these statements and schedules are fairly presented in all material respect. As noted in paragraph 10, we did not audit the industrial or statistical sections, and accordingly, do not express an opinion on this information, including your CAFRA. Our next report is actually all the way in the very back of the report, back on page 144 and 145, 169, 170 of your PDF. PDF copy in front of you. This discloses our findings, if any, regarding the city's internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements in accordance with governmental auditing standards. As noted in paragraph two, our responsibility is to consider the city's internal control over financial reporting for the purpose of planning and performing our audit, but not for expressing an opinion. Accordingly, we're not expressing an opinion on the city's internal control. With this in mind, as noted in paragraph four, we did not identify any deficiencies as material weaknesses, which we are required to report under governmental auditing standards. In addition, as noted in the next paragraph, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance whether these financial statements are free of material misstatements, we did perform tests of compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, and we noted no instances of noncompliance or other matters that we are required to report under government auditing standards. Our last report is on page 146 and 147, as required by the U.S. Office of Management regarding the Uniform Guidance or the Compliance Supplement. This is your report on your federal programs. This report will disclose any noncompliance regarding the city's compliance that could have a direct or material effect with provisions of major federal programs or grant agreements. As noted in paragraph two, compliance with these requirements is a responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to consider the city's compliance for the purpose of planning and performing our audit and obtain reasonable assurance the city has complied with the types of compliance which could have a direct or material effect on your major federal programs. As noted in paragraph five, we have determined the city has complied in all material respect with the type of compliances that could have a direct or material effect on each of its major federal programs. In addition, as noted in paragraph six, the city is responsible for effective internal controls over compliance. As noted in the second paragraph on the next page, we noted no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the Uniform Guidance. Overall, would encourage you to look at the management discussion and analysis on pages 13 through 18. It gives you a kind of a comparative to see how you're doing this year as compared to last year. It's an excellent source of information to see that from both sides. Basically concludes our report. Is there any questions? Once again, we appreciate the opportunity to serve your organization. If you should have any questions, please feel free to contact myself, Nathan, or Zach, or Barry, to answer any questions you may have when you come up.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Just in a nutshell, you can get everything he just said, 150 pages, by reading 13 through 18. That's probably the best. And just so the folks who are listening at home, they also have access to this. You can find, including this audit, on our website at www.paducaky.gov, and we go all the way back to 2001, so if you want to look at all, I guess that's what, 17 years, right? 17 years worth of audit, you can, and it's there right now.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, let's move into the business part of the agenda. First up is the consent agenda. Items on this consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests such. Anyone have anything to take off tonight? No? All right. In that manner, we're gonna ask Lindsey, our Assistant City Clerk tonight, to read the recommendation... Adams, for recommendation, please.
Minutes for the January 9th, 2018 City Commission Meeting. Reappointment of Mark Workman to the Electric Plant Board. This term shall expire February 6th, 2022. Further, the appointment of Sandra Wilson to the Electric Plant Board to replace Jeff Peterson, who has resigned. This term shall expire December 31st, 2018. Receive and file documents. Personnel actions. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary through the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for a matching grant in the amount of $216,000 for a heavy rescue truck for the Paducah Fire Department. A municipal order accepting the real property located at 809 South Fourth Street to the City of Paducah in lieu of foreclosure with nominal or no consideration, and authorizing the mayor to execute a consideration certificate in the addendum to the deed. A municipal order authorizing and directing the Planning Department to submit a letter of intent for an African-American Cultural Heritage Action Fund grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation on behalf of the Hotel Metropolitan for the Purple Room Rehabilitation Project.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, you have a motion.
I do, Mayor. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance declaring municipally-owned real property generally located on Massac Church Road, as... and known as the Massac Pump Station Property, held for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Waterworks for the City of Paducah, DBA, Paducah Water, as surplus, and approving the sale and transfer of same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city authorizes the... this ordinance authorized the City of Paducah, Kentucky, on behalf of Paducah Water, a quitclaim, a certain tract of substandard surplus real property, generally known as the Massac Pump Station Property, to Derek and Sheera Miller.
Second.
Any discussion on this tonight? Questions, thoughts? No? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Commissioner Holland?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2017-06-8487, entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operations of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2018, ordinance number 2017-06-8487, be amended by the following appropriations. Transfer $100,790 from the Boils Trust Fund within the Capital Improvements Fund of the Greenway Trail Phase 5 project. Transfer $256,216 from the General Fund Reserve to the City Hall Phase 1 project within the Capital Improvements Fund.
Second.
Any discussion on this item tonight? And then we have Jonathan here in case we have questions. All right, with that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
Yes, ma'am. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of ANK Construction for construction of the City Hall Phase 1 project, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of ANK Construction in the amount not to exceed $4,293,781 for construction of City Hall Phase 1 project, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Any discussion on this item tonight?
No.
No?
No.
No? All right. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for engineering design services for the Greenway Trail Phase 5 Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a professional services agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc., in the amount of $45,900 for engineering design services for the Greenway Trail Phase 5 Project.
Second.
Any discussion tonight? All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner Abraham, you have a motion for an introduction?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2017-06-8487, entitled, and ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, ordinance number 2017-06-8487, be amended by the following reappropriation. Transfer $28,000 from the General Fund 1000 Fund Reserve to the Human Resource Contract Services Account 10003511-523070.
Second.
As you all know, we're going to be, you're going to be voting on, eventually on this SGR contract. This covers that. And all we're doing is moving money from the General Fund's Fund Reserve to the $10,028,000.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Commissioner Holland?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, accepting the proposal of strategic government resources, SGR, to assist the city with recruiting services for selection of a city manager, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to the same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the proposal of strategic government resources, SGR, in an amount not to exceed $28,000 for the assistance in recruiting and selecting a city manager, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for the same.
Second.
Any questions for Martin tonight on this? All right. Thank you very much. With that, let's move into our comments section. And we have Mark Thompson here as our interim city manager. Welcome on board.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
And we'll hear from you now. Thank you.
Really exciting first day. On Monday was our first day of recycling and pickup. And they picked up approximately 150 households were scheduled for the first day. There was a little mix-up. Some of them didn't realize that it is curbside pickup, and they had their rollouts in the alleys. But it was a success. And the arrangements were made, and people are working with each other, and so it seems to be going very well. Right now, we're at about 580 resident homes that are recycling now, and we hope to look for more. So, right now, that's it. Next scheduled pickup is February 5th for the Tuesdays and Wednesdays. True.
That's me. I gotta remember. That's great. I also learned today that we're recycling at City Hall, too. There are blue bins downstairs. So that's exciting. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Comments from Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Okay.
I want to first say that these comments are a result of emails that I've gotten, and so we don't, we don't meet as regularly as we used to because of the consent agenda. So they, I condensed them down. But this, the first intro of this is concerned about the process that we are using as we move forward. During the election last year, well, when was it? 21 months ago, November 8th, when new, new board members came on, new mayor, obviously there's a lot of excitement around that. And you get a person, people in, excited about moving forward with, with the agenda, and feeling that political capital, that's understandable. So here's the, here's the crux of it. As we move forward, in the process that we've used since we've had a nonpartisan city manager form of government, there are concerns that as we move forward, are we, are we holding to that process, or is that process starting to change somewhat? What do you mean change? Well, we have a city manager form of government, which means the city manager is a gatekeeper to the commission, which means if I got an idea, and I think it's a great idea, we have a professional manager in that spot to, okay, vet that. Do whatever it is you need to do with it to make sure that when, if you're going to make a recommendation, you can lay the pros and cons out. Because why? Because if we implement that, then the cities, on the city staff level, they're going to have to, they're going to have to make sure that that happens. So that position is an intricate one. Moving forward, I don't know if that is where, is that still the process that we're using? Meaning, if there's an idea, do, are we wanting that vetted as strictly as possible? Are we wanting that to happen? If we are, great. If we're not, that's, that's a, that's a pause. That's a cause for me to like, why aren't we doing that? And the reason I'm asking that is with the events that's happened over the last few months. We don't have a city manager right now. We have an interim city manager that Mark so graciously decided to, to step in on. Moving forward, we have a company that we all agreed to use to, to bring us a new city manager. They also have within their network a, a piece that in, with municipals in the situation that we're in, can plug in a city manager with professional eyes. Now, why am I saying that? Mark and I, we've been friends a long time, and that has nothing to do with it. I hired him back in 2000, 2001. But here's the thing. Folks buy insurance because accidents are not scheduled. We're moving into an area here, depending on what Frankfurt does, or whatever that unfounded mandate is going to be for us to make up or to cover our retirement. That could potentially be a minefield. So as a commissioner, I'm like, okay, so I want a pair of professional eyes on that that may have had some experience in that particular type of situation to give us the best information possible on how we can navigate through that. I don't know if that's, I don't know if we can get that if we stay with the model that we have right now. Now, my only concern is not so much about me personally, but it's for the municipal. The other thing that I keep hearing, and I gotta bring it up because folks wanted me to bring it up, so I have to do that, is that the form of government that we have, a lot of folks just don't understand how that works. And we, when we're, when we are being, when we talk to our folks during election time, how many times do we repeat that? We have a city manager form of government. We have a mayor and four commissioners. Each one has equal voting power. There's, the only difference in that seat is that the mayor's seat and ours, if there is a, if there's a state of emergency, martial law, the mayor is the go-between. The mayor can call a meeting without the majority, and she chairs our meetings. Everything else, pretty much, is equal power. You gotta count to three to do some things. So having said that, the question is, as we move forward with the challenges that we could potentially have, are we positioning ourselves as best we can to deal with that by not having a professional city manager sitting where Mark is sitting right now until we get one in-house? Those are, those are the questions that, that I was asked. And quite frankly, I think that we would be remiss not to take advantage of the, the opportunity that SGR has in its network.
Okay. Can I get, let me make sure that I'm understanding correctly, and then I'd like to hear if anyone has any responses. So there's, it sounds like there's two questions you're asking. One is about a process.
Right.
And one is about the interim city manager role.
Correct.
Is that true? Okay. So let's stay on the process for a second, for point of discussion. Can you get a little more specific with me on what you mean by process? What, what used to be and what's now? Can you give me the differential there?
Well, then, let's, let's go back a little further.
Sure.
We had, let's see, the, prior to, we had a city manager and was, asked to resign.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. Prior to what?
Prior to, well, let me rephrase. The city manager prior to Mark being here.
Got it. Okay.
All right.
All right. Okay.
Was asked to resign. So pretty much because didn't feel like...
By consensus of the commission.
Right.
That's very important.
Right. That we weren't going in the right, well, that, that person wasn't the person to lead us in the right direction. A new direction. Let's say that. Okay? Yeah. So then he was asked to stay, and he decided to leave.
He was asked to stay to serve as an interim?
As, well, an interim that had had the, the training and the experience of a professional manager. So we lose that. I feel that we're operating at a deficit because we don't have those professional eyes in that seat right now. Now, we have an opportunity to put someone in that seat with those types of eyes that seen some things, been through some stuff, trained as a professional manager. I think if we choose not to do that, I think we may, well, we may be putting ourselves in a situation where down the road, we wouldn't have to, we should possibly not be in. We should, we should do that and have that manager on board.
Okay. So it sounds like you really want to talk about the interim city manager job, not the process. You want to talk about the interim city manager. That's the big point, right?
Well, the process would be, the process, I guess, would be the fact that moving things forward without being fully vetted, that process would be, if you have a city manager, and a city manager is doing what a city manager does, understanding the fact that I know that I have a board that has ideas, I have a mayor that has ideas, commissioners has ideas, send, give them to me. Let me look at them. Let me do what I do. Let me kick it back to you, and make sure that if we go with this, these are the pros and cons. This is a stress it would or would not have on staff. Now, is that, are we still doing that?
Absolutely.
Was that something that was a sticking point with our former city manager? That's...
Not from what I understand. I understand that we're going to, that Mark is the city manager, and that we will treat Mark as if he's the city manager. I don't see that changing. Does anyone else have that opinion that it's changing?
Do you have concerns that previously in this process, ideas weren't fully vetted?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah. I mean, I thought that was pretty clear. Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to bring some examples?
Well, specifically?
For point of conversation? Because this is how you learn, right? You learn by hearing from examples.
Right.
So if there's a, if there's a time when you were concerned, then we should talk about that, and make sure we don't do it again.
The, okay, here's one. The, the comprehensive, the comprehensive smoking ordinance, typically, what happens with something that far-reaching is that that is given to the, either received by the clerk and forwarded to the city manager to do exactly what city managers do with that. That wasn't the process this time initially, and I'm not understanding why that wasn't. I understand that the, the persons that were, that was bringing it was advised to do it that way initially, but that, that didn't happen. And so, I mean, why wouldn't that happen?
So let me, let me lay out the process for you of how that happened.
Okay.
There was an outside group, there was a community group, the Health Department specifically, that said, hey, I'm interested in this. I'd like to go around in our community and form a coalition to help make this happen. And I sent you the timeline. Remember, it started in like February of 2016. So after a year, and what is that, a year and a couple months of all their groundwork, they had petitions in their hands, they had all those things, they brought forth an ordinance, and they were told to grant to the city manager. They did not do that. Eventually, it did get to the city manager. But that ordinance is not in front of you tonight for a reason, and that's because it needs to be vetted. That's the reason why it's not in front of you tonight. So you're right. They didn't, they didn't understand the steps, and they didn't follow that process perfectly. But because that didn't happen, we all took a step back and said, let's get this thing vetted and make sure we do it the right way. So when outside, when community groups decide they want to be activists, we have to give them that process. And I just don't think that was clear enough to this group. And so therefore, we as a commissioner are saying, all right, just put your paws on for a second, and then we'll have the city manager look at the ordinance. That's why it's on the agenda in front of you tonight. So you're, I 100% agree with you. I think the commission agrees with you, that our city manager should be looking at these things, and that is exactly what's happening with the smoking ordinance. Now, Mark just stepped into this role, so he probably hasn't seen it yet, but he will.
That's great. I always encourage groups to be involved. That's part of it, and I understand that. But on the, on, on this side of the, of the table, it's very important that we do our due diligence because of the impact it could not only have on our staff, but on our citizenry as well. So...
Do you want to talk about the interim city manager?
Yeah.
Piece of this?
Yeah.
Get the feedback from the commission?
Sure.
Because I think people have some opinions about this possibly.
Sure.
I'll just share mine first and get it started. So one of the main reasons why I am very comfortable with Mark in this position is when we sat before Christmas in executive session discussing how we were going to move forward with our city manager in the interim role, I heard everyone in this, on this stand, talk about how confident we were in our department directors. Also, we have a man with 25 years of experience, who's not in here right now, who has been through more battles with the budget than any of us combined, sitting up here tonight, and that's John Perkins. And so for me, I put my full faith in the man who's had his finger on the dollar since he got here, and that we all trust deeply to lead us through this process. And in my, and Mark and I have talked about this, and Mark's role as the city manager, stepping in as that role, is to help guide us through Jonathan's recommendations. To me, having your staff who's been here for as long as these guys have make the recommendations for how we get through one of the toughest times we've ever been through, is 10 times better than someone who knows nothing about our city organization coming in and telling us how to do it. That's my opinion. And I would, I think you should hear from other commissioners, not just me, of course. Does anyone want to have, say anything about your thoughts on this?
I agree with you. My fear is, is that you'll hire somebody for a limited amount of time, and for the first, you know, month or two, you have to tell them where to go to the bathroom, and through all the players. I, I just think that we have a very capable director of management staff, and I see no reason why they can't make it happen, once Frankfurt tells us what has to happen.
Yeah.
Which we're still waiting on that. But I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay. In fact, I'm very comfortable with Mark at the helm and all the directors doing what they do.
Sure.
I would say that as well. This is an interim city position. You know, I was very anxious for us to move forward with hiring a permanent city manager. That's why I moved forward two weeks ago with a motion that we go ahead and hire the search firm. But in the interim, I'm, I am comfortable with Mark. He and I have met. We've been through all of the priorities that I see coming up. The City Hall project is huge. I have full faith that our department heads can work with him on that. I have full faith that our department heads can work with him on that. The pension, I have full faith in Jonathan Perkins, and, um, in the other areas. So, I believe that Mark has the knowledge to bring everybody together and work together as a strong team in the interim while we're searching for a city manager.
Commissioner Holland?
Um, I hear the word due diligence a lot. You've said that to us in other communications, and now in this meeting, and I think I bristle slightly at that because it implies that we haven't, and just because we reach a different conclusion than each other, that we haven't thought through the issue just as carefully, and with just as much careful consideration, and with just as much input from our constituents. And so, I would just encourage, um, all of us to remember that we can reach different conclusions after careful consideration and due diligence, and we can disagree. That's just the reality of our at-large representation. Um, I think it would be a little bit different if each of us represented different districts, and maybe we had limited, um, input or perception from parts of the city. Um, but in the wisdom of the setup of this form of government, we are all at large. We all hear from citizens of Paducah, and we bring different perspectives to the table. And the reality is that after much due diligence and much careful consideration, we can reach different conclusions. And it seems clear over several months that that's happening more and more, and I think that's fine. I think that's healthy. Um, I should hope for the future of our city employees that we find some consensus, um, so that we don't set up our interim city manager, or our future city manager, for failure.
And how would we do that?
Well, I think it's important with any new position, or any new hire, once there is a majority or consensus, that we decide, we decide to move forward, and we decide to move forward with consensus. I think that is important at certain points. Not always. Never going to find it always, but I think when we're talking about employees and we're talking about leadership with regards to the interim city manager, and particularly the new hire, like, I would hate to hire a city manager with a 401 vote, I'll just be really honest. That would be problematic, I think, to say the least. So, I just think that there are some points in which we have to trust the leadership of the mayor, and we have to trust each other, and we have to listen to all sides. But I, and I, like I said, I don't think we'll agree every time, but I do think there are certain points where it is really important for us to come together and agree, and give people the chance to prove themselves and to succeed.
Your coach, you get that right?
Well, I believe that everybody will have an opportunity to, to be successful or not. I just know myself...
So, you don't think support has anything to do with people's success?
Oh, absolutely. And I'm always supporting our guys. Um, and whenever, even if it, if I'm on the end of a 401 vote, uh, it doesn't mean that I'm walking in front of departments with signs that says, you know, you're a loser, get out. That's never it. That's never it. Protecting the municipal, uh, trying to be, uh, exactly who, uh, we were elected to be, uh, I agree with you. That's not always going to be, uh, a majority vote all the time. And that's, that's part of it. We knew that when we ran. Uh, but we have to speak on the concerns of those folks that come to you, uh, and voice a concern. Your, as we talk about, we go out and we campaign, and we want to be your voice. While those voices, uh, may vary, uh, and just because those, what we're hearing we may not like, we got to bring it. And so, uh, uh, that's the, that's the, that's the role we're, we're in. Uh, that's the, uh, that's the mantle we picked up. So, uh, those concerns, uh, that I brought tonight, uh, I am concerned about where we're moving, how we're moving it, uh, and when there are issues that I feel that are issues, or I hear, uh, from constituents that, uh, what, what, where are we going with this? Um, I got to bring those, and I will, as I'm sure you all will too, if, if that happens, uh, if that happens with you all individually. So, this isn't, this isn't anything personal, uh, but it's just the nature of the business that we're in.
Yep. I appreciate that, actually. Thank you for that. And let me ask you two things. One, it sounds like we have a consensus for the most part, and we were planning on discussing this, uh, and the details of this in executive session tonight, because it is about the appointment of a potential person. Um, it sounds like we have a consensus to discuss, um, appointing Mark in that position, while we look for a new city manager, um, which we have decided that we're going to continue that on, it sounds like. Um, and secondly, I just want to ask, you know, as the process stuff comes up, I thank you for bringing it to the, to the table, um, I hope that you'll continue to bring that to the table in the moment, while we're in the moment, because I think, I firmly agree with whoever is concerned about the process. Um, that we all, if you remember, our strategic planning consultant actually said to us, there's no such thing as a city manager form of government. It's called a commission manager form of government. And she was pointing out, um, how important it is to understand the form of government that you're in. And so, I think it's always important for us to refine what that means, and refine what it means to us, and as we experience it, um, that we're constantly asking ourselves, is this in line with our form of government? So, thank you for bringing it to the, our attention, and I hope that you'll continue to do that, um, as we move forward with decision-making. I'm going to move us on, if, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so, anyone else have any comments they'd like to make tonight? Commissioner Rhodes?
I have one. It's, this could be a heck of a, of an interesting year. There are lots, whether it's rebuilding a city hall, or rebuilding a budget, or getting a city manager. And I'm going to work really hard this year, but I'll not be a candidate for a city commissioner next year. So, I'm going to just tell you that. So, there's plenty of time, somebody wants to throw their hat in the ring, have fun. I'm going to work like heck this year, and then I'm going to turn 60 years old this fall, and I'm going to go do something for me. So, how about that?
Look at Sandra. Oh, goodness. We'll have plenty of projects for you to work on after this year.
And, and this, in my, Beto has been worrying me to death, he says, about, when are you going to, when are you going to sign up? When are you going to sign up? Brandy calls me, says, you need me to sign your documents to sign up, so I'm, no.
Well, it's been, it's, it's been a pleasure serving with you, man.
Well, I'm still going to be here another week.
I know, but, I mean, you just, you just dropped it right now, so, I got to tell you now, man.
And I, and I, so, it's going to be, it's going to be a fun year.
All right.
It could be a, it could be a hard-working year.
Get those on misty.
You'll be all right.
I don't know what to say.
Say, we're going, we're going to work hard this next year.
See you, mate.
We'll bring you flowers every meeting from now on until you're done.
All right.
Uh, with that, we do have a few public comments, um, here tonight, comments from the audience. I think I have two here. Um, let's see, Randall Knight?
Yes.
Are you here? Would you like to come up to the podium?
Sure. Just a second. I am, uh, actually not here for any controversial reasons, I hope. Uh, I'm here in support of, uh, the municipal orders, number four. Uh, it's got a fancy name, to approve the African-American Cultural Heritage Act and Action Fund Grant Application. That is a mouthful.
What's that?
Uh, basically, what it is, it's a grant to try and support the history of Paducah. I mean, this is a big part of the history, the Metropolitan Hotel. I don't know how many of y'all have even been in the Metropolitan Hotel.
Commissioner, yes.
I have.
Uh, that's wonderful. Uh, if you're in this area within 150 miles, and you want to see Martin Luther King's signature, Greta Scott King's signature, Dexter King, you have to go to the Metropolitan, because that's the only place you can go and see that. If you are in 100 miles of this area and want to see a display honoring the Tuskegee Airmen, and also the Tuskegee Institute itself, you have to go to the Metropolitan. They've got a wonderful Civil War display. Uh, they've got a wonderful display on Big House Gaines, who of course was instrumental to helping keep the Metropolitan in place. Uh, without him, it wouldn't physically exist. Uh, it's just an absolute gem here in West Kentucky, and I think it deserves every little bit of support. I mean, that was a, it was a quick read and a quick approval to agree to help write a grant application, but I'm here to support it simply because it is such a gem. Uh, the local music, I personally first heard about the Metropolitan Hotel in 1971. In 1971, I was with my father in the car, and he said, hey, have you got a couple of bucks? I need to stop for gas. And I pulled out a wad of bills in 1971. He said, what are you doing with all that money just in your pocket? I said, oh, well, after we get home, I'm going to go buy the new Iacantina Turner record. He said, what do you need that much money for? I said, well, Dad, it's $7.98 plus tax. It's a double album. He said, $7.98? He said, I saw them for free over at the old hotel. He said, I can't believe you're going to pay $8 to buy their double album. And that's when I first heard about the Metropolitan Hotel. My father had seen Iacantina Turner behind the Metropolitan in the attached building. Well, actually...
The purple room.
Yeah, the purple room. He had actually seen them there, and that's when I became familiar with the Metropolitan. There's a ton of great history, the music that was played there, uh, the history that's on display there. Uh, there's a great civil rights display, there's an incredible, uh, pre-Civil War and Civil War exhibit, including the US Eighth Partial Roster, uh, the local people who fought, joined the Army, they actually, it, it's kind of a rarity, they actually were recruited in Paducah, trained in Paducah, stationed in Paducah, and saw action in Paducah. That's a rarity for any unit in the United States. There's a few other cities that can claim that, Nashville, Chattanooga, there's a few other cities that can claim that, but not that many. And that history, and that depth of history is on display there. So, I'm asking that you not do what you've already done. You've approved that we will go forward and apply and help and support the grant application. I'm asking that you do it wholeheartedly, with enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are.
Absolutely. It's such a resource, and I hope that you get the grant, and I hope that you continue to find new avenues of support, and if I can ever personally be of help, please let me know. I think, I would love to see it grow and develop, and...
Hey, Betty.
Thank you.
Are we still doing fish dinners?
Well, uh...
On for 2018?
We have had some requests, but yes, for two, uh, at least starting in February, uh, we should have our fish dinners going again, and, um, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Commissioner Rhodes, for coming out. This man doesn't just talk the talk, he walks the walk. He came out, he's been telling me, he said, I'm going to fix this ramp, I'm going to come and paint this ramp. And he did. Uh, he came along with Kevin, and they painted my, or our, uh, ramp, so I appreciate you so much.
Well, you need to make a list, because he's going to have more time in 2019.
I heard that.
So, he can do all kinds of things.
And if you didn't notice, Brandy Knight is a board member.
I love it.
You've got a good board member there.
Thank you so much.
And then, we, somehow, we're going to figure out how to commercialize these pies, right? Betty, for raise money.
Yes, but I thought you can't do that unless you know what you're...
Commercializing, I like it. That's right.
So, I hope you enjoy them, and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Good to see you.
All right, we have one more. Uh, Randy Beeler. Beely Beeler.
Beeler. Roll over.
You'll have to come up to the, you'll have to come up to the speaker so that our cameras can hear you. Sorry about that.
In light of what occurred in Marshall County today, and two of our members had young members of their family wounded today, what I've got to say is probably not going to make much, so I won't. Um, after watching Romans and, and the Christians in the Coliseum, I, you're not going to hear me anyhow. And by the way, Mr. Thompson, welcome to the party. We'll see you next time when it's important.
Thanks, Randy.
By the way, Randy needs to be running for commission.
On the Hotel Metropolitan platform. Like it, yeah.
History in general.
And history in general. All right, I think Commissioner Rhodes has a motion.
Yes, ma'am. It says, I move the board to go into a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS 61-810-1C; issues which might lead to an appointment, dismissal, or disbanding of an employee as permitted by KRS 61-810-1F; and specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61-810-1G.
Second. And roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And we will come back out to adjourn. I'm not sure we'll have action. I don't know for sure, so we'll come back to adjourn. Thank you all for being here.
By the way, I have a Dirty Dancing ticket.